Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, August 8th, 2022, 7:00 PM here at the City Council Chambers and City Hall for the regular meeting of the City Council. I'll officially call the meeting to order and entertain a roll call from our city clerk.
Both of them. Both of ours not here. Bergen?
Here I am.
Drinkow?
Here.
Kangas?
Present.
Myers?
Here.
Rothie?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll move into item C is the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Move into item D, the approval of the agenda.
I'll move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Bergen, council discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Section E is the approval of the minutes, entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the July 11, 2022 regular meeting minutes and July 18, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item F is our guest council person, the guest council person for August at the invitation of Mr. Kangas is George Vipondo.
He has not joined us. I know he was concerned about business out at Elsal, but-
Understandable.
-his mother and sister both said that they were going to get him here, so.
That's all right. He might show up late, but once he gets here, we'll definitely welcome him. Move into section G, which is presentation of the certificates of appreciation. Council recognizes board and commission members who have exited. I'll read them off here, Greg Gash and Linda Brandt for the Board of Adjustments, John Tharp, Joel Endurance, Matt Nelson, Tara Harm, Tim Rulipah for the Cable Commission, and Mr. Darren Westendorf for the Economic Development Commission. I see that we have one here with us this evening, Mr. Westendorf, so I will personally present his certificate to him if he'd meet me up there at the front. Thank you very much for your service to the community on the commission. If you have any parting words you'd like to instill to the council of the public, feel free to do so.
It was a great time. Really enjoyed the three years that I was on it. Feel like it made a difference and hope the group continues to do that, so thanks for having me tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Move forward to section H, public comments for items not on the agenda. Please leave me your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member, any public comments this evening from anyone. Not seen anybody arise. We will move forward to the consent calendar under section I. Following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item one is a pay request from Holland Hall Engineers Incorporated for the Youth Ball Fields 2019 Cedar River Park for the amount of $2,113.60. Item two is a pay request from Grider Construction Incorporated for the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for the amount of $166,750.65. Item three is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the WPC Facility Improvements 2020 for the amount of $16,792.91. Item four is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the SRF sponsored project for the amount of $98.24. Item five is a pay request from Caltech Incorporated for the MSO Haas Foss Vehicle Lease Agreement for the amount of $54,000. Item six is a pay request from Caltech Incorporated for the MSO Haas Foss Geetec Camera System Lease Agreement for the amount of $15,800. Item seven is a pay request from Blacktop Service Company for the Bituminous Seal Coat Program 2022 for the amount of $36,345.76. And item eight is the cash disbursements for June of 2022. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion.
I just have a quick question for clarification. Items five and six, is this the law enforcement equipment?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Thank you.
I also wanted to say something. So, on number two and three, I really appreciate the fact that we have a listing of how much the total project is going to be so we can kind of see what percentage of the payments we've kind of gone through. But for number four, the SRF sponsored project, we don't have that. Do we have a sense of how much that costs and like how far we're getting through that?
The project is still evolving-
Okay.
...from a design standpoint, so we had the initial concept and cost estimate, but as the staff from WHKS work with the DNR and the people that administer the SRF program, it is a bit of a dynamic project and it is changing the concept. So, we hope to, in the next month or two, have an update that we can share with you.
I mean, I know that that's the, there's like $900,000 that we can use, that we want to use.
Yeah.
So, I'm kind of, I mean, $98 isn't really a drop in the bucket there, so I'm kind of wanting to make sure that we're using up as much of that as possible.
Yes.
Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Move into regular business, section J, item number one is, we've got our guest Lieutenant Colonel Garrett Gingrich of the First Battalion of the 1133D Infantry Regiment, Ironman Battalion. Presentation, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Honorable Mayor Hoffman, distinguished city council members, and to the citizens of Waverly, I wanted to come here and personally thank you for declaring July 14th Ironman Battalion Day in Waverly. My name is Lieutenant Colonel Garrett Gingrich, I'm an infantry officer and the current commander of the First Battalion 133rd Infantry Regiment, known to many as the Ironman Battalion. So, I am also a firefighter paramedic with Waterloo Fire Rescue. I live here and work here in the Cedar Valley, and that's why this is such an honor for me to come here and thank you for the honor of Ironman Battalion Day. I'm a proud grunt of the Ironman Battalion, and for those of you who don't know, grunt is a term of endearment for an infantry man. An infantry soldier is the Army and Marine Corps' ground fighting soldier whose duty is to engage with the enemy in close combat. My career in history as a soldier started here in Waterloo in the Cedar Valley with the First Battalion 133rd Infantry as a private, and 24 years later, I'm lucky enough to be the commander of such a historic battalion. Most people in the area do not know that the local National Guard Infantry Battalion that is headquartered down in Waterloo is known as the Ironman Battalion. The unit is one of the largest in the state and is comprised of 717 soldiers with companies located in Waterloo, Charles City, Olwine, Iowa Falls, Dubuque, Iowa City, and Davenport. The name Ironman was given based upon the many of the soldiers of the First Battalion 133rd Infantry serving 611 consecutive days of combat in World War II. Can you imagine 611 consecutive days of combat in the hills and trenches of World War II? They landed in North Africa and fought the Germans through Africa and into Italy in some of the hardest fighting of the war. Although often overlooked throughout history by the D-Day landing on June 6th into France, the southern front of the war fought prior to that with Germany through North Africa and then Italy can be credited with allowing the Western Beach landings to be successful. Another fact, on January 26th of 1942, a Bravo Company 133rd soldier, his name was PFC Milburn Hankey, had his photograph seen across the country in newspapers as the first American soldier to step foot off the gangplank and into the European theater of war in World War II. It's pretty cool. The same battalion, which is just a fragment of the 34th Infantry Division, which comprises thousands of soldiers in eight states across the Midwest, participated in the largest battle of the division since World War II, when in May 25th of 2011, 11 years ago, a group of 40 soldiers exited off two CH-47 helicopters onto a hot LZ and were ambushed in every direction by an estimated 400, 500 Taliban. A seven-hour firefight ensued and miraculously no American lives were lost or injured. An estimated 217 Taliban were killed and the rest broke contact so that they could live another day. The amazing joint combination of Army infantry firepower, close combat attack aviation, Air Force close air support, and fearless determination allowed the 133rd Infantry to continue to live up to its given name, the Ironman Battalion. For those of us that live around here, this should be a tremendous source of pride that such a fine organization is headquartered right here in the Cedar Valley. So, again, thank you for honoring the Ironman Battalion today. We appreciate the unconditional support that the city of Waverly has shown us throughout the years and especially last year as we redeployed home from the Middle East. Mayor Hoffman has been a tremendous advocate for our unit, so I especially want to thank you for your support of the Ironman Battalion. I have three more months in command of the battalion, however, I'd love to see this become a yearly declaration as the Ironman Battalion will continue to be a historic fixture that stands in this area. To the citizens of Waverly, if you know of young people that are seeking a principled organization that provides purpose, discipline, work ethic, and value in all that they do, please have them explore the Ironman Battalion as an option to serve their country and their community. The Ironman Battalion and the Iowa National Guard will remain always ready. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and thank you for the declaration. I appreciate it greatly, and I know the soldiers of the battalion appreciate it as well. So, with that, I will take any questions that you guys have about the battalion or the organization, and otherwise, I really appreciate you allowing me to share a little bit about the battalion, so, yeah.
Do you know how many members of the battalion live in Waverly?
I don't know currently how many. I know there's several that live in Waverly or the surrounding area. Our closest unit to Waverly obviously is the Waterloo unit. The Waterloo unit has two companies. Both companies are about, one's about 170 soldiers and one's about 100 soldiers. And then Charles City has an armory as well, which is close by here, and that has our mortars. We have a platoon of mortar men that drill out of Charles City. Yeah. Any other questions?
So, in three months, when you step down, are you retiring or just turning over the reins to someone else?
I'm really thinking about what my next move is. So, I probably won't retire. What, I will transition into a new position down at the Joint Force Headquarters in the state of Iowa, and so, yeah, I'll be a plans officer down there in the big cog of the state in the National Guard there. Yeah, so, yeah. Anything else?
And that transitions more to the civilian side of assistance with disasters and those types of things?
Yeah, kind of the incident command system for the state of Iowa when they have humanitarian assistance, floods, tornadoes, whatever. I will be in the operational cell there and I will be a plans officer. Yeah, so.
Well, thank you so much for coming. Thanks for your service.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for the opportunity, and I appreciate the declaration greatly.
Absolutely.
All right.
As always, advance.
All right, Ironman, advance.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Moving to item two under regular business, resolution 22-101, a resolution approving an engagement agreement between the city of Waverly and Williams &amp; Company PC for audit services, financial statements of the governmental activities and business type activities for the year ended June 30th of 2022. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 22-101 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Kangas, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution 22-101 is approved. Item number three is resolution 22-103, a resolution approving an agreement to paint a proposed mural on the north side of the Exchange Building in South Riverside Park. Entertain a motion there.
I'll move approval of resolution 22-103, approving an agreement with Dan Hattala of Waverly, Iowa to paint a proposed mural on the north side of the Exchange Building in South Riverside Park for the estimated cost of $8,000. Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie, council discussion.
I just want to say that I fully support this resolution, but I do have an observation to make, and when we originally approved the plans for South Riverside Park, I was a little hesitant about the railroad track sidewalk. I wasn't exactly sure what that would look like when it was done, but I trusted those people who said that it would turn out really well, and I went to the Exchange Building to take a look at it so I could see, kind of visualize what this mural would look like, and I also had a chance to look at that, the railroad track sidewalk, and it turned out wonderfully. Certainly, any hesitation I had was totally not necessary. It looks great, the railroad tracks, they look like tracks, they look like iron tracks, the ties look like creosote wooden ties, the rock looked like rock, I mean, and it is nice and smooth, so people aren't going to be tripping over it. So, I just wanted to mention that, that it was a great project. I think it turned out really, really well.
They don't smell like creosote.
It does not smell like creosote. You're not going to have the risk of getting run over by a train when you cross the tracks.
Thank goodness.
So, we did get, I think a few council people got an email from a citizen, pointed out a couple of things. I don't know, we can consider these revisions. One would be the Waverly IA change to Iowa. I think the reasoning made sense to me was the basic dating of when postal codes came about was long after when this mural would be, and the other would be, is it possible to paint over the utility box? That would help make that image a little bit better there.
Yep, and I actually received that email from a few of you council members later, earlier today, so thank you for those of you who sent that to me. And, yeah, looking at the suggestions, I mean, they all make sense. It'll be something that I'll need to talk with the artist. As for the Waverly, Iowa thing, hey, you know, I don't know if we're going so much historical there as, you know, saying, you know, hey, this is Waverly, Iowa. I'd see what he can draw up for that to, you know, to do it, shouldn't be an issue. The utility box, you know, we're just looking at probably doing like a small brown, maybe not the actual image of the train, but it's kind of shaded in that brown. So, yes, we're looking to do that already.
So, what you're saying is this is not an exact copy of what we're going to see?
This is not the exact picture of what it's going to be. It's very, very close to this.
And you still welcome suggestions if we can come up with ideas for how to improve it before he starts painting?
Yes, before he starts painting. But it is something, I mean, if it's something major enough, we would like to get him started painting here in the next few weeks. And, you know, this has gone through Leisure Services Commission, they've seen it, the Historic Preservation Commission has seen it and offered their suggestions as well, and now it's before you.
Yeah, and I also don't want to micromanage the artist's vision for what he, you know, wants to portray there, and it's been vetted multiple times. I think the citizen raised some interesting and valid questions. He might not be able to fit the whole word Iowa in there. That's what I was thinking.
Right, and that's what I'll see is how you can design that.
Yeah, I thought, I think it looks great.
And I do remember, the reason there's three people is because there were three people who actually worked the line.
Oh, really? Okay.
So, the number three people is historically relevant.
I've seen a lot of pictures of the depot-
Yeah.
-and it had just Waverly on it. It didn't have any-
Didn't even have the Iowa. That's what I was thinking.
Maybe we just remove it.
Yeah.
Well, we've had a lot of Waverly, Nebraska issues over the years, so.
Let me make sure you know which Waverly it is.
Right.
I think it's going to be a wonderful finishing touch to that park.
I'm looking forward to another mural in Waverly. Got a few now.
He does nice work. We're lucky he's in the area.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Anything further? Hearing none, roll call, Carla.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution 22-103 is approved. Item number four is resolution 22-104, a resolution approving the proposal for geotechnical services for building renovations at 117 First Street Northeast. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 22-104, approving the proposal for geotechnical services from Terracan of Cedar Falls, Iowa to obtain soil and rock boring samples for the building renovations at 117 First Street Northeast for an estimated fee of not to exceed $14,900.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen, council discussion.
So, just to make sure I'm reading this correctly, it looks like the initial proposal is for four boring sites and it got changed only to?
Correct. And this is an estimated fee.
Okay.
I'm still a little careful about locking it into not to exceed in the event that a, something unforeseen comes up or it may take a little bit over.
And this was something they anticipated needing to do all along, or was this something that investigation so far has indicated needs to be done? Or both?
Yes and yes.
Okay, all right.
It was anticipated and it, we kind of dropped the ball on initiating the, getting the quote, and so we are taking one step back to proceed with this. So, they're anticipating that there are going to be micro piles that need to be installed, that they need the geotech report to fine tune the spacing of the micro piles, so that's, depending on how quickly the report comes back, they anticipate moving towards bid letting and finalizing the plans, knowing that they may have to send a denim out to adjust the spacing on the micro piles that are, I think they're anticipating they're going to be six feet apart, but depending on the geotech report, they may have to reduce it to five feet, or they might be able to expand it to seven feet. So, they're still looking and proceeding forward, but they feel they really need the geotech report to fine tune the design.
Can you please define micro piles?
Yeah.
And use it in a sentence.
I had a photo.
Oh, you did, and you didn't bring it?
And I thought it was in with the gen memo and it's not, and I'm sorry about that. So, what they would do is get as close to the foundation as possible, and then they drilled down all the way to bedrock so that they're kind of anchoring into bedrock, and then it, so if this is the side of the building, they're going down right next to it, and then they, they're able to brace underneath the footing and transfer the load all the way down to the bedrock. They're only about this big round, but they are spaced like every six feet along the, along the foundation.
So, there's support?
Yes, it helps support.
Yeah.
Right now, it's anticipated that it's a stripped footing that is not bearing on bedrock, is bearing on fill soil, and so they think that there's been a little bit of settlement over the past 107 years, and that has led to some of the cracking that we see in the walls, and so by taking that stripped footing and transferring the load down to bedrock, they feel that they can stabilize the wall. And it's just the wall on the south.
So, this isn't, I mean, this is as much, repair is not the right word, but it's not just investigatory, this is like to help shore up the building and keep it from settling more?
That's the idea.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you mentioned, I mean, this is just investigatory, this is the micro pilings in the future.
To figure out if that's what's needed.
On how close they need to be together.
Okay.
So, this is just the borings itself. Once we get the results from the divers and the cores taken there, the results from this, if the building is to be saved and moved forward, then we would go ahead and do the micro piles and the concrete.
Gotcha.
We still have to get that reported, the estimates, this is not a quick process.
Right, okay.
But if one foundation corner does have a good crack in it, we want to see-
Yeah.
-right next to it, can we pin it? Is it going to work? There's a lot of that that's going to be investigated here.
So, we got a little ways here to know exactly what we're looking at still.
This should be the last preliminary.
But we have to do this regardless, even if we left it as a city storage shed.
Yep, you got to know what's happening to it right there, especially with the cracking, like you said, the settlement looks like it's caused, but so this is the last, I'd say, fair, Mike, the last preliminary investigatory thing we have to do, and then we will truly know where this building sits. Is that fair?
So, remind me about the divers. This is independent of the divers?
Correct, that work has been done.
Oh, it has been done?
Yes.
And we're just waiting on the report for it?
Yes.
Okay.
And it should be in about two weeks, we should have a preliminary report date. You know, we said that they, there's provisions for upwards of four samples, they felt that two on the downstream side were sufficient in order to determine the integrity of the concrete. Upstream, it looked like it was in decent shade, downstream, not so much.
Anything further?
Okay, Mike mentioned being careful of the not to exceed, do we need to change the resolution or leave it with the not to exceed amount?
So, in looking at the contract, I saw that it actually does say that it's an estimated amount, but it will not go over unless it comes back to council for authorization, so it isn't necessarily a not to exceed. That was in-
I think you're better off just changing it to be an estimated cost of $14,900, and that way if it does go over, it can come back, we can discuss it. I don't want a not to exceed to pin us if it's $300 that we can't move forward and do it if that's the cost, so if council would oblige, I would prefer to just do the estimated cost of $14,900.
Yes, that's where that was the-
So, I'll make a motion to change the language of not to exceed, or should we just strike that, right?
Just strike the not to exceed.
We just have to strike the not to exceed from that other four paragraph.
So, I got a motion to amend the resolution 22-104 to strike not to exceed from the current language.
I'll second that.
And I got a second from Kangas. So, again, move by Schneider, second by Kangas, all in favor of the amendment. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. The approval on the amendment is there, so back to council discussion, if any.
Just clarifies, I'll clean that up a little bit.
Yep. Hearing no further discussion on the amended resolution, Carla, roll call, please.
Kangas?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, the amended resolution 22-104 is approved. Item number five, resolution 22-105, a resolution approving a proposal for design, fabrication, and installation of 33 directional wayfinding signs in the city of Waverly. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 22-105, approving a proposal from Nagel Signs Incorporated Waterloo, Iowa for design, fabrication, and installation of 33 directional wayfinding signs in the city of Waverly for the not to exceed cost of $55,002.30.
Second.
Motion by Kangas, second by Myers, council discussion.
$2.30. Somebody got their two cents worth in there and you got to add it.
Thirty cents. Hearing nothing further there, roll call, Carla.
Myers?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Kangas?
Vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution 22-105 is approved. Item number six is the first reading of ordinance 1110, an ordinance amending the city code, city code of ordinance is a Waverly- of ordinances of Waverly, Iowa by repealing Chapter 64, thereof entitled weeds, and enacting and adopting a new Chapter 64 weeds. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve first reading of ordinance 1110, ordinance amending the city code of ordinances of Waverly, Iowa by repealing Chapter 64, thereof entitled weeds, and enacting and adopting a new Chapter 64 weeds.
Second.
Motion by Snyder, second by Bergen. Counsel discussion. Maybe James wants to quickly explain.
This may seem familiar.
Yeah.
Because we just did this. We had a portion of it that did not get put in that we're going back through and correcting. So it was an oversight. So next week, if you approve this, we will go to second reading, suspend the rules, third reading, just finish it. So it was really a correction of what was done. And it's not even anything substantial, but we want to be accurate. So we're going back through the process to make it, so.
Can we ask what the oversight was?
Which part was?
Um, I know we talked about it. It was, part of the old was left in there inadvertently. We did not get it all completely switched over. So you read through it, you wouldn't really hardly recognize it, but it is still the old language and part of it. And so this corrects the whole thing. So again, oversight that we want to do right, so we're correcting it.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Rothie.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangus.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero with one absent, the first reading of ordinance 1110 is approved. Item number seven is the first reading of ordinance 1111, an ordinance amending Chapter 105 Traffic Code, Section 105.4.10, subsection 37, additional parking restrictions of the Waverly Municipal Code. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1111, an ordinance amending Chapter 105 Traffic Code, Section 105 dot four dot 10, 37, additional parking restrictions of the Waverly Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion by Myers, second by Rothie. Hand this over to James or Bill to?
Bill will kind of briefly run through. This looks familiar also, first time through, so.
So during the high school area, the Fourth Avenue restrictions are remaining, and we just added while school is in session. And then on the second one, we just basically made a new provisions for Sunset, Iowa, and Third Avenue Southwest, which basically just made it one side parking. And it's year round because we don't want to stop and start and try to deal with that. There are small enough streets that they probably, if they were built today, would have gotten one side parking anyway, so.
We first discussed it, we didn't want to just say when school is in session or a certain timeframe because it doesn't alleviate the issue the other months necessarily. And even if you go to September, well, football is in August. And it just, it was just a messy kind of thing to go back through and pick and pick and pick, decided really what the street width. It never would have been dual sided parking the way it's done now today. So we're just going to go to a single sided parking all the time, which is probably where it always should have been. And so this will fix that. And that's what we're starting over with is, again, we were made aware a while ago that when we change an ordinance, we don't go to the second, third, you start all over at the first again. So if you approve this next week, we'll go to the second, suspend the rules, finish the third in time to get it happening at the school as well. But the change was, as Bill said, it's to make the one while school is in session so that we don't miss August because it's starting earlier. And then the other truly goes to a single sided street all the time because it's simpler, you don't have to worry about the timing. Everybody gets used to it and it just solves that problem. But that's at least what we're proposing, if you consider.
So it says on the following streets and then lists Fourth Avenue Southwest?
Yep.
And a, yeah.
While schools in session.
Everything else is crossed out except for, except Fourth.
I think this is much better than the one we did before. Frank, that's. It's cleaner, it's easier. Yeah, I had some issues with it starting, and maybe I'm going by memory here, but I think we started September 1st, September through May. And I got to thinking, you know, school starts now well into August, and that's probably the most dangerous time because people aren't used to coming to school and all of that. And I was a little concerned about that. So I think this is a much better ordinance. And we've seen it linger into June now many times as well. So it's like, well, that really doesn't encompass it, so let's just make it permanent, be done. And. Make it simple. Exactly, so hopefully this will work. That's our goal.
Is it clear from the way this is written, this is only the Fourth Avenue along the high school and not kind of Fourth Avenue southeast or southwest, like over by, further to the east, like?
Past the high, past the Austin.
That's the only Fourth Avenue south.
Does it go all the way to the river?
Yeah.
I mean, it stops, but then it picks up again, doesn't it?
Yeah.
He's right. The high school area, that's why we did these in sections.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
It was related to that particular area.
Okay, there it is. It's the, the.
High school area.
And there will be siding to pass what we're going to use. So it should be okay.
Mr. Bergen's coming from.
I didn't see the, I didn't notice the high school area. So that's what makes it relevant. Okay, go.
Correct.
Thank you.
Hearing nothing further, roll call, Carla.
Snyder.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Kangus.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Vote of six to zero with one absent, the first reading of ordinance 1111 is approved. Section K is reports from boards and commissions. Item number one is the Economic Development Commission minutes of February 8th, 2022. Item two and three is golf commission minutes of May 10th, 2022, and June 14th of 2022. Item four is Leisure Services Commission minutes of May 19th, 2022. Item five is airport commission minutes of June 9th, 2022. Item six is the Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes of June 13th, 2022. Item seven is the Human Equity and Diversity Commission minutes of June 14th of 2022. Item eight is the monthly financials of June 2022. And number nine is the senior calendar for August of 2022. All received and to the record. Mr. Bronner, for staff updates under section L.
Uh, yes, sir, and Garrett has a brief update to see.
Thank you.
Okay, the pool is closing Sunday, August 14th for the season. So if you get questions about that, August 14th. I'm losing all my managers. That'll be my last manager that day. And then everyone else is back in school sports and doing all that fun stuff, sports and band and everything else. So anyway, we made it a little longer than last year, so that's good news. We're still looking for garden volunteers. We've started harvesting things. I guess I shouldn't say we, I haven't been there to harvest yet. But anyway, Saturday mornings at nine o'clock or on Tuesday evenings, beginning at five, I believe, five, five or 5:30?
Six, well, and Saturdays, we've been starting at eight because of the heat.
Because of heat, they've been starting early. So sorry I missed that.
All right.
Anyway, so that's going on now. If anyone wants to come out and volunteer, it'd be great. And then just a quick update on where we're at with the South Riverside Plaza. We obviously talked about the mural tonight. We're putting the finishing touches on everything with the plaza. The contractor will be back in sometime this week or next week to get their parts of things finished up. There's a couple of pieces of concrete that need fixed and those types of things. Then we're going to be looking at reseeding a part of it. The grass didn't grow in quite as well as we would have liked. So we'll be reseeding here in two to three weeks. And then also here in the fall, we will be getting plants planted. So that's where we're at on the plaza.
Garrett?
Yes.
As long as you're talking about the plaza, do you have any idea when citizens might be able to start reserving the shelter house for use?
So I was hoping that it was going to be here in the fall. If we, it's going to depend on when we get reseeded. And I would actually guess that we'll probably push it back until spring to actually start reserving anything down there. But yep, unfortunately, we need to get it reseeded.
Are we expecting the farmer's market to be in there beginning next season?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Garrett. Anything further, Mr. Bronner?
That's all we have tonight, sir.
All right. City Council comments, Mr. Bergen.
I have nothing except to invite people to join me for a beer at the poorhouse after city council to discuss city council business.
Thanks, sir. So Rothie?
I just want to thank the board members of the Wortburg Community Symphony, who held a fundraising event on Saturday. A friend of mine and former classmate, John Hagan, who has found fame as one of the Texas Tenors, came back and performed. It was hotter than Hades out there. But it was a really nice event, and they raised money for scholarships and for a symphony camp that the new director of the symphony is doing. It was a really nice event, and it obviously took a lot of work to plan, so I just wanted to thank the board.
Thank you. Ms. Myers?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Snyder?
Reminder, I think next week, next Monday, DOT meeting on the bridge is 5:00 to 6:30, I think they're saying. There's some stuff out there. It's, if you read it, it's like, is that bridge even in Waverly? It says like 2.3 miles east of 218.
Two points of.
It's official description, and it's not a good one.